It's past 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, July 24th. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Everyone being present. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). Before we start with our reports, is there anyone that'd like to come before the court
at this time, especially if you're from out of town? If not, we'll just follow our agenda. Gas Department, Mr. Alvarez.
Morning Judge, Commissioners. Commissioner Penya, welcome. I haven't seen you since you're sworn in. I'm Chema Alvarez. I manage the Starr County Gas Department, day-to-day operations. My boss is Raina. She's the department head.
Thank you, sir.
So if you have any hard questions, you ask her. The easy ones, you tell, you ask me. My report is in your package, gentlemen. And I'd like you to turn to page three where we record our volume losses and rates. The first one is financial report. It looks very good. On page three, I want to mention something that we're having problems with. You've got up to April and May recorded on your sheet, and May and June is supposed to be on there, but I have purposely left it out for right now. I'm troubleshooting a 25% loss we had this month. And as of right now, the only, we start with the big accounts, with commercial accounts, and see how their meters are doing. And as of Friday, we've only found one, the jail. It's kind of malfunctioning, but that is not enough to cause a 25% loss. I have already called, as some of you recall that have been here before, I've already called Producer's Gas, because we had a problem with them two years ago. Their meter at point-of-sale, at POS, was malfunctioning, and we didn't realize the problem until three months later. So when we got there, it was already three months. We tried to recuperate our funds back, but I don't think we ever did. I have already talked to them, and they're supposed to send somebody over today. I called them on Thursday, and he said somebody would be here Monday, today, to recheck those meters, their meters. At that time, I had already presented to you all that the only way we can control that is for us to have our own meters, but we were looking at $6,000 to $7,000 per meter cost, and there's two of them. And I know the county finances are hard right now, but it's something to think about in your new budget, maybe, if that's what the problem is right now with them. I suspect we either have a business section meters that are malfunctioning, or their meter is malfunctioning, because a 25% leak would be very detectable. People would be calling us. Anyway, we have started to leak survey the system. I have one person doing it right now while we change that jail meter, and we will continue to do the whole system.
What do you have, the meter, that one?
The what?
The meter, what do you have it?
The high school?
High school, or Station 14 or 15?
The one with the problem was Station 14.
14.
Yeah, at Eisenhower.
Eisenhower.
They changed that meter, but they didn't change the one in 15. So I'm thinking that those meters are old, and it belongs to them. I'm thinking that that's where the problem might be at. And the only way we can do it is they have to come in and calculate, and we get together. When they come, we get together and calibrate those meters again, and we see them if they're okay or not. Last time, they weren't, and we had already suspected that that was the problem, but it took us three months to get there, because we never realized it was that problem. We thought it was our system. And again, today, I don't think it's our system. I'm hoping it's not, because somebody, like I said, somebody else, somebody would've called us. There's a big leak.
When you say our own meters, they're going to have their meters, and then we're going to have ours?
Ideally, it would be at the same place where they have their meters, where they tell us how much they sold us. Ideally, right after that, right, almost connected to that, we would have our meters.
To compare.
Yeah, to compare what really came in.
Yeah, the only question, Mr. Alvarez, is that the last time that we disagreed with them, and as you mentioned at the beginning, they refused to adjust their monies, I guess.
Yep.
If we have our meters, maybe that'd be something to talk to them now, when they come. If we install meters, would they be willing to honor our meter if theirs is wrong? If we can prove that theirs is wrong?
Yep. It would be something, if we installed those meters, it would be something to definitely bring up to them.
Yeah, because, you know, I don't want to spend $12,000 and then not honor it.
Yeah, yeah. It would be hard to kind of say no to us if we can prove that ours are calibrated and working, and then the history they've had with theirs. As we speak right now, I'd like to mention, for Mr. Penya's information, Commissioner Penya's information, I don't give my report till this time, because my rates don't come in till after the 15th. We just got our rates the 19th, the estimates, and they were $2 down from last month. It fluctuates. That's why I have to wait till the last second, so I can give you an accurate report as to how much came in, or how much revenue came in.
Thank you.
So that's the reason I do this on this date. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Transfer station, Mr. Alvarez.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, and also, we'd like to welcome Commissioner Penya to the court. Our doors in the transfer station are open for you to, whenever you feel want to come by and have a tour.
I will.
I did leave a couple of our financial report. Other than that, the other thing I have to report is that the construction of the metal building for the facility, tire disposal, is more than 50% completed. Currently, they're working on the roof part, and then we're going to have the two doors installed. They see that probably by the end of the week, they should be finished with the building itself. We're waiting on AEP to go and install a light pole and the light, then we'll get our electrician to go in and wire the whole building up.
Investment officer, Mr. Trevino.
Morning Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Starr County Investment Report, ending June 30th, 2017, is in front of you. Thank you, Judge.
Treasurer, Mr. Penya.
Good morning, Honorable Judge and Commissioners. Our reports are in front of you, and if you would like to follow the report, it is already posted on the Facebook page as Fernando Penya, Starr County Treasurer. And I'm going to go over the summary of the actual reports. First item, the general fund had $700,000 less in the same time last year. The road and bridge fund was at $200,000 less than the same time last year. The total amount of funds in all bank accounts was at 10.1 million, or 1,300,000 less than the same time last year. We're working with a new county auditor on a solution to the bank to general ledger reconciliation issues dating back to January 2015. The auditor's office is working very well with all financial offices. The amount of loans of general enterprise funds was $435,000, being $116,000 less than the same time last year. We do not have any line of credit available to the county now, and cash is going to run out. The balance of the county annex building bond was just over 1.5 million, being just under half a million dollars less at the same time last year. The county's deposits were well collateralized by the bank at 31% above our contract terms. Property taxes levied to actual collections, current general fund property tax collections for this fiscal year to date, ending June 30, 2017, were $8.2 million, or a 78% collection rate in relation to the general fund certified tax rule, and 3.6 million for the road and bridge, or a 67% collection rate in relation to the road and bridge certified tax rule attached. The county unemployment rate for May 2017 was 11.8%. The rate for May 2016 compared to May 2017 decreased by 0.7%. As of May 2017, Willacy County had the highest unemployment rate in the state of Texas at 12.3%. This is only a summary of the report, and the full monthly Treasury Report is here to unfile with the county clerk. This concludes my part of the report, and if you have any questions, Mr. Penya will be happy to answer.
Any questions, comments?
Are you the consoler of the Drainage District Fund?
What was that again?
Are you the consoler of the Drainage District Fund?
Yes.
How many do we have?
1.6, 1.7.
1.6, 1.7.
With the taxes that have come in this year, maybe 1.8.
Did you ever write a report?
Yes, one second.
Which taxes are those? Which taxes are those?
Drainage District. I don't know if you saw the picture of the drainage. No, Drainage District.
Ah, the Drainage District.
The Drainage District has 400,000 in CAD and 1.6 million in investment, for a total of 2 million.
400,000 in CAD?
It's 500,000 for precincts.
Well, there's $2 million in the Drainage District.
Yes, but you can only use it for drainage, but you have never prepared a budget, and you have never prepared a plan of how to utilize it.
Go to that later. I'm just asking.
2 million.
You never reported.
2 million.
The new budget's coming up, and that's what I'm headed.
Any other question, comment? Thank you, Mr. Penya.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything to report, so we'll go ahead and move on with our regular agenda. Item number five is an action item, and this is to approve the vendors. Who?
I don't know, Your Honor. To approve the vendors.
Oh, okay. I have a motion to approve the vendors list. Is there?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Let me go back to item three. I skipped it.
You have it there.
Yes, sir, that's what I want.
Okay, I'm sorry. And this is to approve claims. Are they in order?
Claims are in order.
I don't know, Your Honor.
Move in.
Moved in second to approve claims. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item six is to approve a resolution, and it's in your packet, for the loan at First National Bank in the amount of 1.5 million. I met with Mr. Chapa. He's not present here from Lone Star, but he informed me that this was all we needed, because it's a short-term note, it's not a large, long-time note. It's the same thing we did last year. We need the resolution, and then we need the authorization to draw money. So the first item is number six, and that's to approve the resolution.
I'll take that motion.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then the next item, it's actually to authorize myself to draw monies, and I guess I'd like to add myself and Mr. Carter, our auditor, to draw monies as needed from the 1.5.
I don't know, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second, that's with the amended adding Mr. Carter. Commissioner?
We need to, um, uh, uh.
And we include the auditor, Mr. Carter.
Second, second.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in the second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is to approve the fee schedule for credit card machines that are used in all our offices, and I believe you should have a copy of that in your packet. Let me see if I can find it. But this is, if you all recalled, we approved installing credit card charging machines at the JP's office, four JP offices. They have been installed. Comments I get from the JPs is that they're working very well, but we never passed a fee schedule.
Your Honor, let me correct you. I don't think we have any of those in La Victoria or in La Casita.
We put four of them in the larger offices, and it should have been, I don't recall.
I haven't seen one.
I think on Ramon de la Cruz, they should have installed one.
Well, not in La Victoria, I know that for a fact.
No, because we want one for precinct, to see how they work, and then if they work, we'll go ahead and bring them to respond. It doesn't cost us anything, but every time that they're used, what happens is, for example, if I've got $100 fine that I need to pay, I was under the impression I would pay, and the bank charges $3, I would pay 103, 100 for the county plus 3 for the bank. And it's not that way. From the $100, 3 go to the bank. So that's the reason that I'm suggesting having a fee schedule, depending on the amount of fine, and I don't see it right now. Can you ask Becky, you know, where it's at?
And is this fee going to be added to the amount paid?
Correct, for the use of a credit card.
Okay.
Yeah. They can pay cash, I mean, I'm sorry, not cash. They can use a cashier's check, they can use a personal check, but if they want to use a credit card, then they have to pay the fee that the bank charges us. It's just a pass-through charge. I don't see it. Let me borrow. Yeah, and what the fees are is from a penny to $100, it'd be a $5 fee, from 101 penny to $500, $10, from 501 to 1,000, it'd be $15, and over 1,000, it would be $20 for the use. This is, I think.
And that's money that the bank will collect?
No, the bank will charge us some of this. I don't know exactly how much. The difference, the difference goes to the county.
Yeah. Whereas longer the people are aware of the charges that are being charged, you know, when you get to a $20 charge or 15, you know, I think it's more cost-effective to go get a cashier's check or.
Yeah, and they will be given that option. The thing is that a lot of these people come to pay, and it's on a Friday evening, Friday night, they get stopped, and they don't want to go to jail, so they want to put it on their card, so, you know, I don't think they'd have a problem paying that. But they will be given an opportunity if they want to go get a cashier's check, yeah. This is only those that want to use it. By the way, this will also be used at the tax office, at collections, wherever we have credit card machines, we, they will be using.
Let me ask you something, Judge. When is the decision going to be made to install, they say you got one at Ramon de la Cruz's office. How long would it take to see if it works to install one in?
If you'd like, if you'd like, we can order the other four right now, Commissioner. You know, I have found that they have been very effective.
But that's what I'm saying, you know, if it's working, then we need to install them in every JP's office. Because it's not costing us a penny.
No, the only cost there will be is, if no one uses it for one month, I think there's some monthly fee at the bank, but it's minimal, it's like 3 or 4 bucks, which is worth giving the citizens another option to pay.
I would think that we, I would suggest that we install them in every precinct.
Okay. I don't have it as an agenda item, but I.
Maybe we can add it.
Well, I don't think we can add it, can we? It's an agenda item.
I think we have suggested.
Yeah, yeah, and I was going to suggest that, you know, I'll go ahead and call it back. It takes them a couple of weeks to get them done, and by the time they get ready to install, we'll have it on the agenda for approval. But right now, you know, again, the fees, it's up to you guys, you know, we can change it if you want. I think this was, you know, very reasonable, but it's up to you.
I don't know, Your Honor. As long as we give the people the opportunity to select.
I second.
Moved in second to approve the fee schedule, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Item number nine is an action item, and this is to approve a permit application from Lanita Oil, LOC.
Is this a line that you're going to cross at that basis? They already talked to me, so I wouldn't make a move to give you the permit.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is also an action item, and this is to approve a memorandum of agreement between County of Starr and Texas A&amp;M University Health Science Center. Becky, what's this?
There is a one that is going to help, the medication at the self-help center.
Oh, oh, yeah. I think they're going to have a health fair at the self-help center, and Commissioner, let us proceed.
People that want to come and try to provide free medication to those people that cannot afford it, you know, to pay the difference, or in a full amount, I think it's a good services. So I do some, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion.
Is it going to be at the self-help center?
Yes, sir. But they can serve the whole county.
We just got a service and taking them over there with you?
No, or they can. I think they're going to be able to travel elsewhere, you know, when they need it.
You know when it's going to be, Commissioner?
Well, I don't really know.
They haven't given a date yet.
They're already being around here, but I think they want to have a, but we'll let the court know when this is going to be.
So you can probably send us flyers, or we can promote them down precinct two.
And then, we're going to start just sometime next month in La Victoria. We're going to, RGV, we're going to help the medical school, being open a clinic, I think, twice a month at the La Victoria, but we'll be passing out flyers, telling the people, so they're going to start off, I think, two days out of the month to start off, reserving.
That's good. Any other question, comment? Did you move, Commissioner?
Yeah.
In your second, second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is to approve an interlocal agreement between County of Starr and City of Laredo for the 911 database maintenance service. This is something that we do every year. The equipment that we have at 911 belongs to City of Laredo, and the 911 program is administered through the COG, but through City of Laredo. So we just need an agreement that they will continue to maintain the database.
I don't know, Your Honor.
I second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is an action item on final approval for La Ruya Ranch Lots, Phase 1 subdivision.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioner Penya, welcome aboard.
Good morning. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to recommend a final approval for La Ruya Ranch Lots. It's in Commissioner Garcia's precinct. There has been, it has gone through our review department from our engineers, and everything's in order, so at this time, I would like to recommend a final approval.
You have gone through a checklist earlier.
Yes, sir.
Everything's been completed.
Yes, sir, everything's in order.
I don't know, Your Honor.
I second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Mr. Garcia, I'd like for you to wait for something else before we go to a thicker session.
Items 13 through 23 are budget amendments. Are they in order?
Yes, sir. But even though it's in order.
Okay.
I second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 24 is an action item, and this is to approve an imposition of optional fees for the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. I don't know what this is about, but.
She's not huge.
No.
Was it reasonable to table it?
I second the table.
Okay. Moved in second to table, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 25 is an action item, and this is to approve the consolidation of precincts for the November 7 election. John?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do I have the list of the sites we're consolidating to? We're going to go from early voting sites, we're going to go from four to one, and from election sites, from 10 to four, meaning we're going to put one election day site on each commission precinct. Are there any questions? I believe you all have the lists, I believe.
Where is they?
It's towards the bottom of the packet. Yeah, now, remember, this is for the November election. That's the general election, where our elections are mainly in the primaries.
Is that the only election coming up?
Excuse me?
Is that the only election coming up?
Yes, sir.
We have the primary.
Yeah, we have the primary next year.
No, but in November, there's no ceiling?
Not that, no.
I don't know, Your Honor.
I second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I'm going to go back to my report, just remember, as the court well knows, and I think everyone in the community knows, we've been trying to rehab the courthouse for a number of years. We've made several applications to the Historical Commission, and unfortunately, we have not been able to score high enough, because they say that what we're looking for is not a restoration, but a rehab job, and their monies are for restoration. This year, I got together with Representative Ryan Guillen, and he introduced legislation for us and for Hidalgo County to help maybe find a vehicle so that we can go ahead and work on the courthouse. Henry Cuellar was able to get us $8 million, but it's all alone, and, you know, I think the court certainly doesn't want to go into that kind of debt. kind of debt, and neither do I. But anyhow, what Ryan did, he introduced legislation to where every court case in the county, whether it's JP Court, District Court, County Court at Law, any court in the county, every case will be assessed a $20 fee, and that $20 fee will go for the reconstruction or rehab of the courthouse. It's going to be interesting to see how much money that will generate, but I think the number of cases that we have, JP, Bettis gave me a list of all the cases that are heard by JPs, and there are quite a number. So, I think it's going to be a very, well, possible solution to service a loan to fix a courthouse. But it's still in the planning stage, but I do want to thank publicly Ryan Guillen for doing that for us. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do something in the very near future as far as our courthouse is concerned.
Your Honor, based on your, on your, on your report there, actually, right now, at this point in time, the minimum for any traffic ticket costs you $101 that goes directly to the state, is correct?
Correct.
So, then we're going to add up another $20 to come into the county, and then over that, there have to be a fine of whatever it's going to be to be going to the general fund. If they assess the $150, fine, $40 will be going to the general fund, the rest goes to the state and the.
Pretty much, yeah. The state has a minimum that they tack on to any case, and that goes directly to the state. And actually, of the fines that are collected, very little stays here in county. Of course, the state later sends us sort of like a rebate for the monies that we submitted, but it's not anywhere close to what we submit.
When you say every case, do you mean every traffic citation, every case that comes before the civil case, anything that comes before the JP?
Yes. If there's a court cost ensued, the JP has a lot, any judge has a lot of wiggle room. You know, they could dismiss the case, not even get to court, and if that happens, of course, there will be no court fees.
I wonder if Representative Guillen really started the impact of the situation here in the county, especially with the economy the way it is right now?
Well, and I totally agree, Commissioner, but, you know, we do need to do something with this courthouse. If not, it's going to fall on top of us. You know, we've been trying to work on this thing, like I said, at least 8 years. So, that's one way of servicing. You know, any way you go, it's not going to be liked. There's always some negative to it. But I think this is the fairest way. Someone breaks the law, there's consequences, you know, and none of us are both the law. That's my feeling, and I feel sorry for some of the people who cannot afford to pay, but, you know, they need to be more careful in what they do and not to break any laws. This country is a country of loss, and we must follow it. Anyhow, that's just to let you all know. It is, I've got 10 till 11, and pursuant to Section 551.074, we will now go into closed session to discuss order of salaries and the renewal rates for United Healthcare. It's 11:40, and we're back in open session. One was informational only, and that was the rates, insurance rate. So, no actions needed on the rates, renewal rates, it's information, and on the order of salaries. Does there a motion for that?
Judge, let me see if I wrote this right, Judge. If not, correct me. I'm going to move that we approve the order of salaries, but deny the first one on the list and pay with the last one on the list. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll take the motion.
Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I do so move, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.